Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting of March twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. Anyone here needs any hearing devices, please let us know. And nobody's jumping up. Donna, or I'm sorry, well, ladies and gentlemen. Now, Donna.
I will. Councilmember Bod, Councilmember Sherman. Councilmember Gutierrez. Marinesco. Deputy Mayor Schmidt. Councilmember McDowell. And Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? The city manager having late changes?
No.
All right. Councilmember, have any board reports to share? Right. Has everyone reviewed the items consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published? All right, any discussion? Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a presentation from Finance Director Mike Givens.
Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and members of council. Normally, the monthly financial report has been part of the consent agenda. I proposed to City Manager Knighton that a presentation at a council business meeting regularly throughout the fiscal year might be prudent so that you have a chance to really examine parts of it. We can go over it together and highlight it in this manner, not just to make his last meeting longer. But we think it'll be informative. As you are aware, we're forecasting a two thousand and twenty-four general fund budget where expenditures exceed anticipated revenues. So careful analysis of the twenty-three financial position seems warranted. We're also working with the Financial Sustainability Task Force, who will be making recommendations about the general fund two thousand and twenty-four budget to the city manager. And again, it seems beneficial for council to be briefed regularly on many aspects that the task force is also discussing. So my focus for tonight's presentation will be on the general fund. As we go through the financial report analysis for the month of January, I want to remind council that it's just one month and out of the fiscal year. So the variance estimates we put in this are rough at this point. However, I know certain things to be true. So many elements of the very variance estimates are likely accurate. I do take a more conservative approach to both the revenue and expense estimates. If anything, things could be better. Revenues might not be down quite as much in the areas we're forecasting. That's my hope. And expenditures might improve even more as the fiscal year progresses. And when I say improve, that we might back off some of them to save a bit. And I'll point out a couple of those areas as we go through. Revenue estimates are forecast to be down about three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from where I had initially anticipated them to be when we formulated the budget last fall. Much of the decrease is due to lower B and O tax revenue from one of our primary payers into that system. We know some information about that. That'll need to be adjusted. We know it's probably settled to a more post-pandemic level for their business activity. And that's really the reason for that. We were basing it on the last about two and a half years of activity, and it dropped off to be really more where it was pre-pandemic or pre maybe, let's say, June or July of two thousand and twenty, when that really ramped up. The biggest unfavorable revenue categories at this point are estimated to be that B and O tax, non-city utility, sales and use tax, and then fines and penalties based on what has been received the last two years. Again, I'm taking a worst-case scenario, look at those revenue lines. And if the fiscal year goes forward, it's my hope that some of these improve, in particular, sales and use and the non-city utility. I was asked to give an explanation on the percentage of sales tax received by the city. And I think if I just advance, will I come to it, or do we have to switch? So this, as many parts of Washington tax law, property tax, sales and use tax, it's a complicated formula of the split between even just what the city is designated and then what the county gets. It's probably a little bit more straightforward in our county because we're the only city within the county. But I worked this up and in a hope that it helps to explain this a little bit more. So as you know, the total sales and use tax for the city of Shelton is eight point eight percent. So the state receives six point five percent. Transit receives point six zero percent, and the county receives point four zero percent. And then the city receives actually less than one point three percent of that remainder. Sales tax is distributed to the city by the state. And by law, the city receives a percentage of the first one percent. And the county also receives a percentage. So for that first one percent collected, the city receives point eight five percent and point one five percent goes to the county. So that's why I say even of that one point three percent, we're still not collecting quite all of that. I didn't even add in there that the state keeps a small, I think it's about one percent, as an administrative fee for the Department of Revenue.
One percent of one percent?
Point one percent, I think, sorry. The voters of the city approved an increase in the city's sales tax rate of that point one percent for the collection of a public safety sales tax beginning in April of two thousand and twelve. And the same revenue sharing requirement as other sales and use tax exists where the point one five goes to the county. And then there's a small amount allocated to the state as an administrative fee. And then the other part, part of that that I wanted to point out, we also put in our budget information that point four oh percent goes to the county. And that's designated out there as I listed, broken up in the point ten oh percent increments. The county criminal justice portion of that, the county receives ten percent. And then, just to make it even more complex, the remaining ninety percent is then split between the county and the city. And so we do receive that amount also. And then the last part of it is the Transportation Benefit District. The point two zero percent that started in two thousand and sixteen and is limited to the ten years unless reallocated by the voters is also then dedicated, in our case, to the street fund. It's where that revenue flows in directly each month when it comes in. And we have some detailed reports on this that I'm learning more and more about as I'm here longer, where we can pull for the the financial report that we present to you. There's a portion of it in there where we talk about what percent is retail, what percent is dining, and et cetera. We can really, we get data where it's reported to us from Department of Revenue by business amount, et cetera. So we can really kind of see some trends. And so when we're making these forecasts, we're trying to really look at the data year on year. For sales tax, when we receive it in February, that's based on sales that were collected in December. So we always tend to see a higher amount in January and February. And then typically, it levels off a bit, starting in March because that's received for sales in January. But we're not really seeing much of a change right now. If anything, sales tax is up just a little bit. And I would equate that with likely the higher prices of everything that we're seeing in stores. So right now, those sources are looking pretty steady. We're estimating that we collect everything we have budgeted on lines such as property tax. That's probably about the second largest category in the general fund. So on the revenue side of things, I don't really think it's a bad statement right now. It's just, we're going to have to keep watching it and and very carefully monitoring that. On the expenditure side, one month into the fiscal year, it's difficult to draw any bold conclusions off of that because a lot of projects haven't been really started yet. You can see that several departments, I'm not advancing this probably very well. If I go out, this is the where we break down some of the departments. You can see that some of them have a negative variance. One part of that variance is due to, we received the, and I think you've been briefed on this, the liability insurance bill was significantly higher, over three hundred thousand dollars higher than we had budgeted just due to industry standards. Well, industry costs, I should say. When we allocated that out, because we allocated out by department, of course, nobody had planned for that. So some of the variance is due to that. Another part of the variance is the need for a supplemental budget, which we'll be bringing to you for consideration this spring. So for example, the finance department is showing an unfavorable hundred and one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars due to the moving of an employee from another department. So we'll correct that in the supplemental. But this is going to be an area we just need to watch. The general fund, as I've mentioned, is facing that situation in two thousand and twenty-four where revenues will fall well below what our expenses are. So there are some things we can discuss as a leadership group on maybe slowing some things this year. We're not really there yet until we have a little bit more data, but we're monitoring it carefully. On the, towards the end of the document that we present to you, that's the sales tax comparison I was talking about. Normally, once we get into the year, you'll see the month and then the comparison to the year. In January, it's a little bit hard, because I might have gone too far too fast. At the end of the document, there's the fund balances. I draw your attention to that as simply one page of the report. I, of course, pay close attention to because you can see where we're estimating the ending fund balances to be. It's one month in, so we're going off primarily on the enterprise funds that we're expecting them to accomplish what is budgeted. That doesn't always happen. But as we look at that ending fund balance, one of the things I'm paying particular attention to is that we're ending above policy. In other words, that percentage threshold of ending fund is still within council financial policy. And that's still looking good even for the general fund. One place I neglected to mention on the general fund where I'm estimating that will end slightly below where we budgeted is right now, it's looking like the jail costs aren't going to be quite as high. But that's one month in. And I, you know, we're looking a little bit ahead out of fairness because we can see what's happening in Janu- February and March. We just had a bill that's going to be paid in this week's accounts payable run from our contract with Nisqually. And it was up a little bit, but it's still less than what we were anticipating we might be spending. Now, I can't control what we, amount of people we might send to jail. But if it continues in that trend, we won't dip as far into the reserves or need that capacity as we had thought during budget preparation right now, today. So that's the report, and I'll be back regularly and we'll keep reviewing it. Thank you. Yes.
So, so the city's main income is sales tax, but that's only at one and a quarter percent. We are not getting the eight point eight percent sales tax. Just want to make that clear because.
Correct.
You know, there's a lot that we're collecting all the sales tax and we're not doing things with that money. But we're only getting one and a quarter percent goes to our general fund on retail fails in the city of Shelton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to recess for a regular meeting up in a public hearing. City Engineer Ken Gill has details for us about the six-year transportation improvement plan.
Good evening, council. It's good to see you on this sunny day. So I wish we had our meeting outside to enjoy some of that sunshine that just appeared in the sky. So before you is something I presented to you three times before, and it's our six-year transportation improvement plan. So you may be thinking, why three times? Why does we keep bringing this back every year? But it's a requirement for our state to do that. But and there's other reasons too. But the most important reason is that you guys get to check in and see the projects that are on it are important to you. So you also get to see what projects that we'd be chasing funding or what projects that we've received funding for. So last and last and not least, it's the project that you'll see that will go into your STIP, the statewide transportation plan. And those are listed. Before I talk anymore about projects, a big thank you to Donna for putting the public hearing in the paper. So thank you so much for doing that. And then a big thank you to Nancy Huntley. So she's our statewide programming engineer. She helps me fill out all the boxes and check all the, cross all the Ts that I get it right. So that's all I had to present tonight. The six-year tip is actually in your packet. It's this ugly-looking eleven M seventeen piece of paper that's, you got to kind of squid in or zoom in to read. And I can talk about in detail any project on this if you'd like. So for that, after that, I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Donna. Does anyone sign up for public testimony on this subject?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that hasn't signed up that'd like to speak on this subject? Right, do we have a motion?
I move to place resolution number twelve sixty-four dash zero two two three and the six-year TIP attachment for April fourth. Action agenda.
Right, comments or questions?
Yes, requests. Now that we have GIS capability, can we map this out, all this?
Yeah, when GIS is fully implemented, as you know, we're going through the implementation for that new program and with our new GIS analyst here that we have on staff. We are also starting the enterprise asset management piece, the component of it that will help significantly in the future. But we will absolutely, once that's implemented, be able to map that for you and show it on the screen.
Right.
I'd like to comment on the Western gave the project. A lot of people are commenting on how beautiful railroad's looking and how safer they feel because they can look out and see and they have a really clear path to get the safe way or wherever they need to go. So thanks, Ken.
You're welcome. I'm really looking forward to getting you paved. I'm tired of the bumps.
Any more comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to place resolution number one two six four dash zero two two three and the six-year TIP attachment on the April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three action agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Does public hearing is closed or resume a regular meeting? Senior Planner Jason Doss is information for us regarding an intent to annex.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening is, might be a familiar concept based on the Pecock Ridge annexation we just completed last meeting. A notice of intent to annex a currently vacant piece of property, forty acres located south of Island Lake. There's a graphic up on the screen there, South Island Lake, north of Shelton Springs, roughly northeast of the Huff and Puff city property. This is the subject of a thirty-six lot subdivision currently being reviewed by Mason County. The project would access through city limits through the Shelton Springs subdivision. They would be using city water and sewer. As they move through the process, the decision was made basically that they should just annex to the city. Since they're contiguous to the city, we'd be receiving all the impacts. So the applicant has applied, submitted this notice of intent. As is similar to the last process we went through. At this point, there's no official request before the council. We're just making the decision. Does the council agree with the configuration of this? And again, it is a single owner property, so they, we have, there's a hundred percent of the property owners are in favor of annexing. And would we want the property to assume any city indebtedness? And from staff's side of things, the answer to both questions are yes and yes. And we are recommending the council agree and place the resolution on the action agenda for the council's meeting on April fourth.
Thank you, Jason. Donna, we have any public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience that has not signed up that'd like to speak on this? All right, do we have a motion?
Move to place resolution number one two six eight zero three two three on the city council action agenda for April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to place resolution number one two six eight, yeah, three two three on the city council action agenda for April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. All in favor, say aye. Post, motion carries. Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us about a water reserve storage option.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, Jay Harris, Republic Works Director. So water reservoir storage options, at our last meeting, I spoke about this. We have a couple million gallons worth of water in reservoirs, sprinkled over the city, five different reservoirs. Oldest one was built in nineteen fifty, newest one was pretty recent, two thousand and eighteen. We don't have adequate storage in our reservoir system. We're having a problem with new development and new connections. And so the the comprehensive plan, the water comprehensive plan, which we'll be coming back to you soon, has a bunch of different projects to increase the reservoir storage in the city. We wanted to bring in a consultant BHC to look at these storage options from the comprehensive plan and make sure that maybe we might move in a little different way rather than a bunch of little reservoirs in the future. Maybe put in a larger one, you know, up maybe sort towards Sanderson Field, that sort of thing. And get out of some of the smaller reservoirs. In total, we need a couple million gallons of storage in the the twenty-year water comp plan. And maybe we accommodate that in different ways is what we're thinking. Also, that we're thinking that maybe like the high school tank is nearing end of life, nineteen fifty. Likely it's probably brought offline. If so, when, we have some divers going in there. We have an RFP out right now for some tank divers. They go on and evaluate the corrosion on the inside of all the reservoirs. And then they also clean out just a little bit of sediment in the bottom. They vacuum it out. And so then we get pictures and a report back. So anyways, we also want to look at the potential of the Port of Shelton water systems. One at John's Prairie and another one at Sanderson Field. They got a couple tanks, a couple wells. What would happen if the systems were interconnected, maybe for emergency purposes? Maybe for longer term, you know, planning purposes for some industrial growth? We have some water rights that are available, and we could probably serve those areas maybe a little bit better in the future. So we've been having some conversations with them. We just want to see how it works in a model. And so the estimated cost for BHC to complete this option study is seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that's the end of my staff report and no changes since the last meeting.
Thank you, Jay. Donna, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak on this issue? Right. May we have a reading of resolution one two six five dash zero two two three?
Resolution number one two six five dash zero two two three. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign the work order with BHC Consultants LLC for a water reservoir storage option study.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt resolution number one two six five zero two two three as presented.
All right, comments or questions?
Marinesco, I left you hanging at the last meeting too. I asked council, when was the last earthquake in this area? And it was in the Squali quake in two thousand and one. Real quick, that was six point eight magnitude, shook for about twenty seconds, depending on where you were. The closest to Shelton was nineteen forty-six. It was right near in town. It was a five point eight, pretty minor damage. The reservoirs made it through that earthquake. They also made it through the Nisqually earthquake. And North Olympia had another one, nineteen forty-nine, about a seven oh. So that was before the high school tank, right? But our reservoirs, for the most part, are not seismically reinforced. Upper Mountain View would be the closest, right? The last thing is the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake hit January twenty-six seventeen hundred. Okay, a long time ago, right? The recurrence interval of that earthquake is about every three hundred and fifty years. So we're about due on recurrence intervals, right? They can go six hundred years or can go, you know, range between two hundred and five or six hundred years. It's a nine oh earthquake, couple hundred miles off coast. We're going to get about eight oh shaking here. The worst part is, is this four to five minutes anticipated shaking. So it's going to be large and it's going to shake for a significant amount of time. The last thing about Cascadia, in the next fifty years, one in one in nine chances of it occurring. So this is all from data online. It could be another hundred or two hundred years before the earthquake. But one of the goals is to circuit in our water system ready, public works ready, emergency water, gallon of water a day a person ready, those sorts of things. Thank you.
I definitely don't want to see a four-minute earthquake. I've been, I've been in minute earthquakes and it seems like it's thirty minutes.
It does.
Was there an earthquake in nineteen sixty here?
Nineteen sixty. Hold on, I got, there's some really good resources online. Let me look. So nineteen sixty sixty sixty. Yeah, there was one in sixty-one of five oh. And it was by Mount Saint, Saint Helens. Probably know the reason why a few years, twenty years later, right? And then in sixty-two, there was a five-five near Vancouver.
All right.
Right. Any other comments, questions? Right, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number one two six five dash zero two two three as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Public Works Superintendent Brett Armstrong has information for us about a grant acceptance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring forward the Department of Ecology Nutrient Reduction Grant Acceptance. This is a grant through Department Ecology for the new nutrient permit that we have since we discharged into Oakland Bay and Hammersley Inslet. It's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seven dollar grant. They kind of size that grant for expected costs to the treatment plants that it affects. And this is based on totally inorganic nitrogen levels that plants discharge out into the sound. Luckily, the upgrades that we did to the plant about ten years ago now have really good treat, pretreatment, and so we are considered a small loader. And yeah, this is for some analysis that come in the future. Doing it a car, all known and available reasonable methods of prevention and control and treatment of our discharge. And this also pays for some of the additional lab monitoring that we need to do along with those reports and a few equipment purchases if we need to implement them. And we are recommending that we waive the three-touch rule and adopt this resolution.
Thank you. We have any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience want to speak on this issue?
Sure, I would.
Yeah.
I love her.
Sure.
So it just struck me something there. Hi. So this grant that we have, and we're controlling the the flow into Oakland Bay. I, and we seem to be, we seem to do a pretty good job of that. We had Bill Hunter, or not, Bill Taylor, come and have conversations about that. I can't help but wonder with the, some of the camps, homeless camps that we have and all of that sewage and urination and defecation and and drugs that's completely untreated. I just would have a curious question as to how does that play into it? Something that we probably should think about because several of those camps are close to waterways. So how does that affect us? We just had one of Teresa Johnson Trail, ten tents, they were there for six weeks. There's a creek that goes right down through there, so just something to keep on your radar.
Any other public comment? Donna, may we reading the resolution number one two six seven dash zero three two three?
Resolution number one two six seven dash zero three two three. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, accepting a nutrient reduction grant from the Department of Ecology and authorizing the city manager to sign the funding agreement and other related documents as needed.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
We have a motion.
Sir Mayor, I move to waive the three-touch rule and adopt resolution number twelve sixty-seven dash zero three twenty-three as presented.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? Thank you.
What?
Yeah.
Thank you, Brooke. Right? This is Brooke, right?
Yeah.
What is a nutrient? I looked, I was looking this up and Googling it, and it says some nutrients are good, some are bad. What?
Yeah, it's. Nutrients, some are good, but when they drive down and start absorbing the dissolved oxygen in the water, it's not good for the biological, for the shellfish and other animals in there, or species in there. It's not good for the biological, for the shellfish and other animals in their her species in there.
Right. Any other comments or questions? We have a motion to second to waive the three touch rule and adopt resolution number one two six seven dash zero three two three as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right, City Manager Jeff Knighton has information for us about City Manager Transition.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Members of Council. I noted this on the agenda to uh allow council. As you know, I will be uh leaving my position on March thirty-first, be my last day in office. And wanted to uh give the council time to discuss uh transition plans and what direction you would like to go. So I turn that over to you for uh council discussion and hopefully a motion.
And who'd like to start this? Okay, Councilmember Peterson.
I nominate Parks, Retractions and Facilities Director Mark Ziegler to serve as interim city manager while a search is performed to find a permanent replacement.
Second. Second, oh, okay.
Second.
Okay, sorry. Uh, comments or questions?
Did you second that?
I did, I can. I can.
She's second.
She's. I strongly support motion.
I couldn't think of a better person to uh. Keep this ball rolling that uh. We've started, we have a lot of projects and I, I think Mark is the perfect person. And has lots of experience here at the city in thirty years you've been here. To uh continue uh keeping things rolling and until we find a replacement for Jeff uh. Uh, it's a perfect choice.
I uh remember Mark when he came.
All right.
Long time ago.
Any other comments or questions? Mark, would you like to speak?
Yeah. Appreciate that question. Just, just over twenty-nine years today. Being thirty, I think it'll be thirty, thirty in September. For those counting at home, right? I know I look a lot younger than that, but. The one benefit about Jeff being here is, you know.
Right, you're my final, my final form.
Yeah. Yes, exactly. Um, I just want to thank the council. I want to thank Jeff. I want to thank city staff as well. Uh, this uh um great opportunity, I think, to uh. Help in the transition here at the City of Shelton. I think um. The, I want to be a resource for the community, our staff. Um, and our partners, uh, I think in the twenty-nine and about half years here. Um, we've built some relationships in this community that I can continue. Uh, continue on and continue to be a a resource uh for us in the future. Um, this is my hometown. It's where I grew up. It's an honor to serve this community and continue. Uh, what we're doing here and uh and leading the way and. And bringing the vital services that uh that are necessary to the City of Shelton. So. And uh, I'm just honored to have this opportunity and and serve the council and my community. So thanks so much.
Thank you. This is an action item. Is anyone in the audience like to speak on this? All right. We have a motion to second to appoint Mark Ziegler as our interim city manager. Until a replacement is found. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Thank you, Mark. All right, Jeff, will you give us a city manager report?
Sure, a couple of things I want to mention. It's spring. Uh, I'm sure everybody's happy about that. Um, I know I am. Get to see the sun. So that's fantastic. A couple of other things, the uh wanted to mention that uh Leander Sharp, who is a member of our Human Resources Department. Uh, graduated from the Northwest Women's Leadership Academy that is uh developed and put on by the. Uh, International City Managers Association, the Washington City Managers Association. It's a leadership development tool. Uh, she graduated from that and did a great job and. Learned a lot and is looking forward to progressing in her career. So that's uh, that's great news. It's second uh member of the city team that has graduated from that uh particular um. Uh, leadership training. So very proud of her. Uh, and as we just talked about, this is my last regular meeting. I've enjoyed it. I'm uh uh glad to be able to work with uh several dedicated, very dedic- dedicated council members. And with the city team here that is incredibly dedicated to the community. Uh, in improving things and uh making this the best place it can be. With that, I guess the only other thing I wanted to mention, next Tuesday will be a study session. Um, where you'll be discussing uh B and O tax and business licenses. And kind of how those two things interplay. It's really a um uh code cleanup. Uh, more than anything else, we're not changing rates or suggesting we change rates or anything at this point. Uh, but there are some gray areas in the code that we want to make sure are clear so we can support our business community in that way. Uh, and that's uh all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? We'll get you next week. We'll embarrass you next week. All right. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comments on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, do you, anybody in here want to comment tonight?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is George Blush.
How we doing, council members? Uh, my name is George Blush. I'm a Cedar Shelton resident, downtown business person. Uh, I sit on a bunch of different boards around here and I like it here. Um, my daughter Annabelle received the Olympic Middle School student of the trimester award today while at school. And I was really proud of her today. You know, I was a little, I got to look at her and smile. Got to take her to Dairy Queen for ice cream. Her belly shuddered and everything, so she didn't call me tonight. But last weekend, I couldn't let Annabelle walk a half a block from my shop to Fat Cat Coffee Shop. The reason she couldn't was because there was a person using drugs in the corner between the shop and Fat Cat. Annabelle deserves better than that. My daughter is a good kid who does good things and is involved in the community just as much as I am. What I want to bring your attention is on Monday, the Lakewood City Council passed the Sydney ordinance. That would criminalize dangerous drug use in public. All schedule on narcotics like meth, heroin and fentanyl use are now a gross misdemeanor punishable by up to three hundred and sixty-four days in jail. A five thousand dollar fine or voluntary treatment. Other cities have followed suit and I think we could save lives and clean up our community by doing the same. The narrative that we have a homeless problem that is creating the garbage, human waste and drug paraphernalia is wrong. Most of the problem is criminals who know we do not have laws like this in place exploiting the loopholes in our system. It's time we protect ourselves, protect our children from these criminals and clean up our city. I know we all want what's best for our city in that we deserve better. Our kids walk around downtown. I watch your kids walk home when I'm going to pick up my daughter from school. You know what I mean? Joe, I've seen your kids downtown waving signs a million times over the years. You know what I mean? These uh, no, I'm sorry. Kathy, your granddaughter and your great granddaughter walk around with the shopping cart or with the stroller all the time. You know, you love seeing them kids out there doing that. Sharon, your kids pictures up at my shop, you know what I mean? And they all grew up here and we want to keep it that way. We want to even just clean it up. So something simple like this is just a matter of getting in touch with Lakewood, looking at the rule that they created, bringing it here and figuring out how we implement. You know, this is just a fair move for everybody in our city. I love to see us all start working forward for things like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Athena Ayers.
Good evening, City Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, as most of you know, my name is Athena Ayers. I'm the Executive Director for Community Lifeline of Mason County. Serving um homeless individuals without children. Um, for all of Mason County, not just for Shelton. Um, before I get started, I wanted to say a farewell to City uh Manager Jeff Knighton and just appreciate you for all that you've done. For us and while we're sad to see you go, we congratulate you on your new position and wish you well. I also wanted to thank the the city uh for supporting us in our project proposal to Senator uh Murray and Congressman Kilmer. And as soon as we have any updates on that, I will let you know. We. Did achieve the letter of support from the county as well. And several of the uh service providers in our community. So we were super excited to have everybody's support. Uh, the reason I wanted to come up and speak today um is very similar to what George had to say. And I appreciate you sharing that story and. And reminding us, you know, that we're all part of this community and we do have children and family members and people that we love and care about here that. We want to see be safe. Um, and on that subject, I'm looking at the city's strategic goals. Uh, for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-five and. Number two of three of those goals is community safety and it might be intentional that this is broad and kind of vague. Um. But under community safety, there's not a whole lot that really defines what we're talking about. And what what community means, what part of, are we talking about the entire community? Are we talking about a piece of the community? Are we talking about just, you know, making sure that people can go to jail? Because that's a huge piece that definitely needs to happen, especially if people are. Openly using hard drugs and and putting our children in danger or at least exposing them to things that they don't need to be exposed to. But we, I think we also need to acknowledge that having nearly five hundred documented homeless individuals sleeping on the street is a huge. Community safety concern, not just for the people who are sleeping on the street. But for the rest of the community that then has to worry about whether or not their. Feces and urine is getting into water supplies and whether whether or not people are openly using drugs for whatever reason that might be on the streets. Or whether or not people are, you know, camping in places that they really shouldn't be. And most of them don't want to be. Out there. In fact, one of our clients was just found deceased. Last night and this is something that continues to happen and I brought this to your attention and I know that we're trying. I just think that we need to have more definition around things like this that say community safety and what that really looks like. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Colleen Carmichael via Zoom.
Good evening, I'm Colleen Carmichael and I'm the Executive Director for Cahote Communities. I want to talk about criminalization of homelessness as not being effective or cost effective. As an example, in March of two thousand and eleven, sit lie laws were enforced in San Francisco. And sixty percent of the businesses said there was no reduction in loitering. Ninety percent said the sit lie citations. Were issued to repeat offenders and of those, four people received more than half the citations and two of those four people spent a week in jail. Twenty-seven percent of the jail population is homeless people. Who did not commit a crime except not having sufficient money to pay fines. In the meantime, the homeless count continues to grow every year and so does the number of people waiting for housing. Criminalization policies make homelessness harder to exit. Arrests, unaffordable tickets and criminal convictions. Make it more difficult for people to exit homelessness and get back on their feet. A misdemeanor conviction can make someone ineligible for subsidized housing. And criminal records are routinely used to exclude applicants. For employment or housing. These barriers to income and housing can prolong a person's homelessness and even make it permanent. Moreover, fines and court fees associated with resolving a criminal case can amount to hundreds or even thousands of dollars. The criminalization of homelessness creates a costly revolving door that circulates unhoused people from the street. To the criminal justice system and back. I'm going to remind you again that chronic homelessness can cost taxpayers up to thirty-five thousand dollars per person per year. Including the cost of legislating and enforcing criminal ordinances. Incarceration on average costs forty-five thousand dollars per year. Communities that criminalize may face expensive lawsuits and could lose access to federal funding. The cost of permanent supportive housing per person is approximately fifteen thousand dollars. A study of chronically homelessness individuals in Seattle. Found that costs decreased by sixty percent per individual after one year in housing. Even after factoring the cost to providing housing and supportive services. Many other studies have shown similar results. The cost of criminalizing unhoused people far exceeds the cost of housing them. Housing people saves money. And let me just echo with what Athena said, Jeff, it was an honor to work with you and I appreciate the effort you and the city council have made towards homelessness. I'm going to reiterate one more time, housing is the way to get through this. And we're willing partners and happy to create whatever plans are necessary to do that in conjunction with the other providers. So thank you for the opportunity this evening.
That's all that have signed up, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak?
Sir, thank you.
Good to see you guys. Dean Jewett, lifelong Mason County member. Appreciate the ability to be here. Hi. Not that I agree with everything that I've heard today, uh, not that I disagree with it. Uh, that's kind of when you can look at both sides of the coins. And kind of walk away with uh maybe an idea of what can work and what can't work. Uh, but when we cite uh studies from two thousand and eleven. Uh, I'm not sure how relevant that is. Uh, we're not San Diego, we're not Seattle, uh, we're Shelton. You know, not that I don't care about Seattle, San Diego or any other community. The one I really care about is the one that I live in. And the one that I can help. Okay? Uh. I'm going to steal some, uh, I'm gonna steal one word from Mr. Ziegler's speech. And that's a resource. I need to be a resource for you guys. I don't need to be an adversary. We're already on adversary terms with a, with several of you. Okay, whether that's my fault, whether that's your fault, whether that's both our faults. Uh, I grew up in this community. For years and years, my family's been here for years and years. I own businesses here and have for years and years. I built the cable system that the many of you guys use today. Okay? Uh. We need to take an approach. That we can have some real. Um. Some real results from. Uh, I don't feel that our homeless task force uh really did a lot. I mean, we had some conversations. Uh, I'm not sure what really good came out of it. Uh, I guarantee you that it's not putting lockers up downtown though. You put a locker up, anybody ever watched Storage Wars? Okay, you come across somebody's personal belongings, how long do you have to keep that? So the hundred and ten thousand dollars a year that the lockers are going to cost us, that's an upfront cost. What about the back behind cost? Why don't I come and pick up my equipment or my stuff? Or, and it just sits there and hangs and hangs and hangs. Those are hidden costs that we will, that will double that cost. Uh. Obviously, uh, I feel, and if you look at Monroe, they have a no sit, no lay lay law. It works. Nobody can be within a hundred and fifty feet of a business. And cause a negative behavior. You go and look at the alcoves, you go look at poor, uh, and I'm going to say her name, Holly Kahoon. One of the hardest working, nicest ladies that I've ever met. That's a downtown business icon. And the stuff that she has to go through on a daily basis is embarrassing. You know, our police officers or police people uh put a camera in for them. Does anybody even monitor it? Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak?
I would.
Okay.
Good evening, Jackie Jewett, Shelton, Washington. So. I'm listening to all the conversations and they're really good conversations. Actually, they're really good information that's coming from the speakers. And so part of. My thinking is. So, so in a school, right? There are students, there are, uh, there are just families and things that. That, you know, need some wraparounds, right? We need to take care of them. And so students with behavior problems and and academic learning problems and. We have admin, you know, we have maybe the specialist teachers, music, art, P E, et cetera. You know, might have counselor, we have the teacher and then we have the parents. And so the community is involved as well. So it's just, it's this collective group of individuals that helps support this child. Every single year as they continue. And we do that for several, several students, right? Many, many, many. So. My question is. Why can't we have a variety of people? Who love our city? And want to see our city thrive and look nice, quite frankly, to be beautiful again. So why can't we have a group of people that can do that? So to make plans, brainstorm, make plans, actually implement. There are so many good ideas. There are so many, so many things we can do. Not one person can come up with a solution. It's gonna take a doggone village. And so we need that village. We need to come together and figure out what we are gonna do. And these people that we're talking about, they're people and they do deserve that. We just don't have the resources. But there are so many other ways that we can begin. To help. In addition to what is already being done. In addition to what is already being done. So, Dean me- mentioned the task force earlier, and that was about a twelve-week deal. We need, we need a group of people, a committee, an advisory board. This is an ongoing thing. It's not going to go away. And our homelessness is increasing. So we need to step up to the plate and take care of all of our citizens here in Shelton. And we can only do that by working together. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else like to speak? Do you want to pull the comment? Alright. Does the council have any new items for discussion?
Just a quick question on the, the comment about the. Using drugs in the public scene, can we just get some more information on that? It's a, I don't understand the decriminalization aspect of it and how Home Rule can work in our advantage for it, but I'd like to learn more, so.
Alright.
Yeah, that was.
Uh, just as a follow-up to our appointment of Mark Ziegler into the city manager position, do we also need to address his contract this evening?
Not this evening.
I assume, yeah, I think uh, uh, the city, city attorney was online with us this evening, so uh, she will work with uh, uh. The mayor and the deputy mayor and get all that ironed out.
Very good.
Alright, council, any other new items? I have a couple I'd like to bring up, but I'd like to probably do, get a pilot program going again with porta potties. I think the city should provide a couple. I think we should ask for nonprofits to provide one outside of their location, uh, Community Lifeline. Um, a food bank. There should, you know, anywhere where there's, there's people that are using those, their services, there should be a porta potty. And I think that facial should provide one outside theirs, but we should provide a couple in well-lit areas as well. Um, I talked to the little bit porta potty, they were willing to do it. Was a hundred dollars a month, I believe ten dollars of that was insurance, so if it gets destroyed, they'll replace it. Um, it was like ninety bucks plus ten dollars in tax, so. Um, so I, I think it's really important that we get those porta potties at least in some locations to where. People aren't using streets or trees or um, to go to use the restroom. I know it's, we tried it before, I, I think it's time to try it again, maybe a better locations, well-lit locations. You know, so that, that is, that is one. Does anybody have any? Thoughts on that?
Not at this point.
Can we say staff to investigate it and get some porta potties down there at least? And look at a ordinance for nonprofits to provide them outside of their locations?
I would be hesitant to. Put that on the nonprofits. I would ask that our nonprofits partner with us, and I would hope that most of them would. But I think that if some of the city is going to initiate, then we need to take the responsibility for that. And both Poverty Task Force, it's been a minute. Um, it, this has come up before, and so I'm glad to hear that you found a vendor who's willing to work with us. Because that was a huge challenge even for the farmer's market last year because of the amount of destruction to the actual um, units themselves. So, I'd be interested in getting some more information.
Yeah, this has failed a few times.
Uh, once, they tried it again. They tried it once, but the, the, the company pulled out. The company I found was willing to provide porta potties and charges insurance for replacement if there's any problems, but could have been location. Might need to put them in better locations, but, I mean.
They, they get destroyed. I have porta potties that get broken into weekly. I mean, it's, they just always destroy them. It's, it's. Well, it's kind of what happens to them. Codifying the. Nonprofit aspect of it, I'm not sure that's compatible with our code, so I would want to make sure we think about that.
Well, I was just, I was assuming we would change the code. Um, because the people are hanging out at Brewer Park because of that.
Porta potties on the sidewalks in front of.
Well, I'm not talking sidewalks. There, there, I'm thinking, me and lifeline could have one right outside there by Brewer Park, and you know, there's a, uh. Another place you could have one, all the Sheltonese could have one right there in the parking lot of their. I'm just thinking that there are, there are locations uh, that people could put them in. You know, we, we got to, you know, we want to stop the, using the restrooms in the streets and then. So that's one way to try it. I, I know we tried it before, but it's been many years and I think, I think it's time to try it again, so. Alright. I got one more if nobody else has anything. I'd like to talk about the infamous sidewalks to nowhere. We've, um, it's been an issue on and off for years. Sidewalks are important. I believe that new development absolutely should be putting in sidewalks and all that good stuff. But I believe we have a lot of infill lots in town that, that just don't work. There's, you know, if you've got twenty houses on a street and three vacant lots from whatever reason, a fire or the house fell down. And then we're going to ask that one person to put a sidewalk in, and then there's not going to be any sidewalks for the next thirty years on the left or right of it, or. I, I think that we need to evaluate where sidewalks are going to work and where they're not going to work. And I would like to put a moratorium on the sidewalk ordinance just for infill lots in town until we can figure out where the best places sidewalks are.
I, I totally agree with that. And we, we talked about.
And this is infill lots, not.
Right, we talked about the purpose of. Sidewalks to nowhere. There's no purpose.
It, it doesn't make sense in, in, in development, I'm sorry, in areas where we've, we've been a city for, for fifty years or a hundred years. Where there's no sidewalks at all, but there's two vacant lots in that street. It just doesn't make sense. Um, you know, we could have forethought it, you know, years ago and then did it. But I, I think it's really, it's, it's a burden. It's not going to work. On a lot, I drove around and looked everywhere um, the last, this last week. Whereas, this is just, we're going to have one sidewalk in this, on this one street if we, this guy builds a house here. Um, I've been to locations where there's houses that are on the street. There's just no, the house is going to fall down before we have a straight sidewalk. We're going to, there's no sidewalk at all. You're going to have sidewalks like this. On both sides of, of the same street. So, I mean, I, I think that we need to really look at where sidewalks are going to work, where they're needed. And I, I entertain a motion to put a moratorium on infill lot sidewalk ordinance until we get more information or better information on it.
I'd like to get that on a study session agenda because I think it is something that we've addressed several times in the past fifteen to twenty years. And there are some um, creative ways that other communities have addressed that as well in terms of instead of requiring a sidewalk. Having other ways that they, the contractors or homeowners can contribute to walkable, livable communities in other fashions. And making sure that those dollars are being spent in the wisest way. Because if the goal is to connect our city in a strategic manner, then that needs to be part of the larger conversation. Um, so I'd like to get some information from our community development staff on what that looks like, and of course, our, our building community as well.
There's, there's been several study sessions over the last twenty years on sidewalk to nowhere.
Um, I know with this council.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's been many. And if you just go into these neighborhoods where there's no sidewalks and look at the two or three vacant houses there, you're going to go, how in the world? Are we going to have a sidewalk for six blocks? When these houses have been here for a hundred years, and we're not going to ask the house to build a sidewalk that's already there.
In some of the areas, there's telephone poles in the way. It's a lot more than just throwing in the sidewalk. But.
But you've got some crazy sidewalks.
I mean, we have, we actually have a um, you know, uh, Habitat for Humanity that. That would add a significant amount of money to their project to try to build an affordable house. They're just one person I've talked to. And the only sidewalk in the, now, a whole entire side of the street will be right in front of that house or those three houses maybe. But um, I, I think it's, I think we just need to get out there and look and find out where we think we need sidewalks. Um, I definitely know there's places where it's just not going to work. And I think that we're um, putting a new burden on, on people for nothing. Because you're going to have a sidewalk and then no sidewalk, and maybe a sidewalk and no sidewalk. Like I said, absolutely development, new development, new neighborhoods. Need, need to do that, but I think the infill lots where there's already houses, we, we need to. We need to put a break on it, and then, yes.
Um, I won't say exactly where it is, but it, this is, this is the way it is. So you come across the street, you're on a sidewalk, come across the street onto grass, no sidewalk. You walk the ways, there's, then there's sidewalks. And then the sidewalk ends, and there's just grass. And then you go around a little bit further, and there's a sidewalk, but it's not really a sidewalk. It's kind of tied into a driveway into the facility. You tell me what that makes sense.
So. Our arterial roads all have sidewalks, or you know, we can get uptown, south, we can get uptown, north. You know, we can get around downtown, um, but I just think some of these residential neighborhoods that are old, it's just, it's just a burden. I think it's a burden on, on the person trying to build that one house that will fill that street up or that three houses. I, I, I mean.
So what we can do, I know, public, our Public Works Department has been working on a, a critical transportation map. And that includes uh, pedestrian facilities as well as roadways and cars and things like that. So we can complete that, that critical uh, uh, transportation map for the city. And then couple that with some information about uh, sidewalks and how. Where they might work best, uh, and schedule that for a study session in May. That's your next open date is May ninth. Um, a little more than a month away, so it won't be too long uh, to wait for council to have that discussion.
So, for somebody trying to build on some of these lots at this moment in time, can we? Tell them that that may be a condition that could be released later?
We can tell them that the council will be discussing it on May ninth, but whatever comes out of that study session will then have to go and be updated. Uh, in the code before, you know, uh, people who work for the city when they're reviewing development, they have to follow the law as it is written. Um, so until council takes the decision to either change what's currently in the code or not. Uh, then that's, that's kind of the way we have to go, and we do work with people. I mean, specifically on that Habitat project, we've uh, worked quite extensively with them. Uh, in order to make that project feasible. Uh, but um, you know, if council wants to have a discussion on this, which it sounds like you do. For a study session topic, I think the, the May ninth meeting would be the next most appropriate time.
Okay, I think that there has been a moratorium on sidewalks before, so that's why I thought maybe we could just put a moratorium on them until we figured it out.
Well, the part of it is, that was in the residential, and then this property specifically, talking about habitats in the CRV. So that didn't come out of the CRV, it didn't, it didn't go over that part.
And Jeff, when we um, get that information from staff, we also specifically look at how that dovetails with the Safe Routs to Schools program and some of those other pieces that are. Tangential to that conversation.
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm worried about uh, inequity and how we. Look at sidewalks because historic district has sidewalks and where I live in Guatemala, it doesn't have sidewalks. So. Um, I just, I have concerns about um, the sidewalk issue. I mean, ideally, we have sidewalks everywhere that will pour us and um, water, it's okay, but um. Um, are we gonna, if we look, if we open this up, we're going to look at sidewalking everything or nothing, you know, so. So, I think we have to register.
There's a, we will, we will think about uh, all of those things. A big component of it is our phase two permit, right? Uh, for stormwater because the curb and gutter uh, direct stormwater to where it needs to go to be treated before it goes into.
And I agree, but that, that's not going to work in some of these, some of these neighborhoods. There's not going to be a sidewalk.
Right.
Other than maybe one.
When I just, I just, I'd mention that as an illustration of all the various things that we have to think about to bring. Uh, policy options to you to consider, so that we make sure that we share the upside, the downside. What are the risks of each decision? What are the upsides of each decision? So that you can make a, make a, a appropriate call for the community.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other items for discussion? Our next meeting is scheduled Tuesday, April fourth at six P M. We also have a study session, March twenty-eighth at six P M. This meeting is adjourned at seven oh four P M.